I'd say let's go ahead and get the show on the road. We can go ahead and get started. We've got a very special guest presentation tonight. So if I could get everybody's attention, Commissioner Miner has the pleasure of making some recognition here.
When I ran for the county commission, I spoke with a lot of folks around town about various subjects. And one thing that I would hear often was that, "Have you met with Dr. Pam Hall?" And then I'd meet with someone else, and they'd say, "Well, yeah, that's fine, but have you met with Dr. Pam?" And I'd meet with a third person, and they'd say, "You've got to meet with Dr. Hall." I'm thinking, "Who? Dr. Hall? I've heard this name. I've heard this name." When I met her, I realized what they meant. Whenever you meet with Dr. Pamela Hall, you need to hold on your hat and put on your seatbelt. And I mean that in a good way. This is a Tallahassee treasure. And every time I -- I've not worked with her as long as you all have, but in the short time I've been part of the board, I've had the honor and pleasure of meeting with her at some coffee shop around town. And every time I do that, I leave the table so much wiser and more intelligent. And that's just a fraction of the information that she's throwing at me. There's all kinds of other facts and great concepts and scientific algorithms that are left on the floor at my feet that I just don't pick up. But I thought it was high time that we recognized her incredible work and her dedication to the people of Leon County and to the community that we love. And so, with great honor and pleasure, we have the following proclamation, Dr. Hall. Whereas Pamela Hall grew up in a rural area in Vermont, earned an undergraduate degree from the Massachusetts Institute of Technology, that's MIT for the rest of us, in biology, and a PhD in biology from Boston University, BU. And whereas Pam studied tropical forests in Southeast Asia and the Amazon region of Ecuador, was a research associate at UMass Boston, and spent six years as an assistant professor at the University of Aarhus in Denmark. And whereas in 2000, Pam relocated to Leon County and found the lush forests and rural character of Bradfordville reminded her of her Vermont home. And whereas, since moving to Leon County, Pam continuously has given back to her community through her service as president of the Centerville Rural Community Association, a member of the Leon County Water Resources Committee, Keep It Rural -- we've got some Keep It Rural folks here, I think -- the Residential Land Availability Committee, the Leon County Septic Tank Ordinance Advisory Committee, and the Wakulla Springs Working Group. And whereas Pam was instrumental in Leon County adopting the Bradfordville Storm Water Standard, which ultimately led to improved water quality protections in lake basins throughout Leon County. And whereas Pam developed the first statewide inventory of septic tanks for the Florida Department of Health. Yeah, that's good. It's still a whereas, though. Whereas Pam spent countless hours analyzing data and providing guidance and recommendations to maintain the Tallahassee-Leon County urban service area and curtail sprawling growth. And whereas in 2018, the Wakulla Springs Alliance awarded Pam with the Wakulla Springs Champion Award in recognition of her significant contributions to protecting Wakulla Springs, which included Pam being the primary author of a proposal to develop a wastewater facilities and management plan for the unincorporated area of Leon County. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County that today we celebrate Dr. Pamela Hall for her accomplishments and lasting contributions to Leon County. We recognize her leadership as a champion of our lakes and a protector of rural lands, and we express our gratitude for her selfless commitment to the environment and the quality of life in our community.
Hey, Mr. Chair, she doesn't have limit this time, right? I just, you know?
I will be careful. I thought of all sorts of things to say to go on and on and on, but so I blame this all on Scott, my husband, because when the MAGLAB moved from MIT, I was happily ensconced in a postdoc at Harvard, which was the one place she didn't mention. It was great you mentioned MIT instead of Harvard. Doesn't matter. And so I went off to my faculty job in Europe, and he came down here. And after six, eight years and two children, I believe I appeared in front of this county commission very pregnant with the first one, I finally gave up and said, "Okay, I'll come live in Florida." And, you know, I think this is what happens when anyone moves and you find people that you enjoy, you find a community. And I needed something to do. And I think, is Randy Denker in the room? It's Randy and Kathy's fault that I learned all about you guys. They taught me something about land use, and then they dragged me into it. And it really didn't go kicking and screaming, because actually, I think as an ecologist, I'm sure pre-adapted to understand the complexities of both ecology, both human and natural, and to think across, you know, space and time. And I'm not really scared of numbers, so I was pretty careful, pretty pre-adapted to this. But I will say, I really didn't know anything about land use. And I think, actually, when you guys listen to me, if you work with your staff, you would realize how much I have learned from them. Where's staff? They're like all over the place here. So between the county staff and the planning department staff, I really learned a great deal about land use. Tom Ballantyne taught me all sorts of things about water resources and stormwater. And it's Anthony Agardio's fault that I know anything about septic tanks. He came and fixed mine, and since then, I've been dealing with their contents ever since. You know, this group of people over here are -- there are a lot of the people that I have worked with over years. I think you all know, you know, good government runs because there's a bunch of involved citizens, and these people are some of the most involved and most important citizens. And none of us ever do this alone, including you guys. That's why there's seven of you. So I thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for coming, and thank you for, you know, enjoying my company despite my rants and my graphs and my data all these years. That's also Scott's fault. We both learned how to do that in college. Well, and to thank, thanks, Scott, for finally dragging me here and convincing me to stay in one town, for all the years of listening to me rant about what was going on in politics and helping me think around it. And to my children, the one who's at home foraging for dinner in the refrigerator because we're not home making dinner together. But I'll tell you, it's one of the nicest things. I have kids who respect politicians, regardless of the disagreements I've had the number of times I've sued you guys, won or lost. But I respect the job. You know, we can disagree as people about how you occupy it, but in my household, politicians are not a dirty word. They're a profession that needs to be respected, that you should seek to be one perhaps someday, and, you know, pay attention to what they say, because you get to vote them in or out of office. And then directly to you guys, I think Commissioner Proctor and I are the longest up here. I believe that you got elected just before I showed up with Maya in utero. Thank you for letting -- Nick Maddox is a classic example of my style, right? When he first got elected, I walked in with a map of Leon County future land use, rolled it out on his desk, and said, "Commissioner Maddox, here be your kingdom. Let me tell you what the colors mean." And so I thank you guys for letting me be my pedantic self, for humoring me as well as sometimes really paying attention and listening. I think the county's done a lot of good with their wastewater, and I know I sort of like shoved it down your throats, but then you guys accepted it and rolled with it. You know, the next question that's coming up, I get to say this because I don't have a three-minute limit, is the expansion of the urban services boundary into Walani. And if my friend Becky Subermanian always called me Miss USA, Miss Urban Services Area. So I hope you guys will listen to the arguments about why this is a bad idea at this time. Sustainable communities do not have to constantly expand their boundaries. They're sustainable because they live within their means. And my very last salvo, because I get the podium, and you guys don't do this, you think it's all the city's job to do transportation, but the affordable housing problems in this town have more to do with the cost of owning two cars than they do with the cost of a house. And so if we're going to go forward in the 21st century, and I have millennium children, they do not want to bloody own a car. If they have to own one, they'd like to share it with three families. They want to live someplace where they have trants that they kept them around. And this town is getting older, and you all well know, as we get older, we don't drive so well. We need to really be able to have an alternative. And I know that's not your bailiwick, but this gets very important when you think about the most important things you guys can do to make it better for your residents, is land use and transportation and environmental sustainability. So that's all. Thank you very much, and thank you.
We got, everybody's got to get a picture with you. Why don't you come up here, and we'll circle everybody up here? How about that? One big group picture. You stand right, are you standing, you can stand right on one of the chairs here if you want. Come on up here.
Hey, Commissioner.
You doing good, Commissioner?
I'm doing well.
Good. I'm trying to get up here. Oops.
One, two, three. One, two, three. And... Joyce, start. Joyce, get up there. This may be a bird. Come on, yeah. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Crazy shot.
Thank you all very much. Pam, very well deserved. And I might say, I'm going to exert chairman's privileges, and I'm going to jump in here first. Don't sit down just yet. So let me just tell you, from my perspective, Leon County and Tallahassee is a better place because of your advocacy over the years. So, and frankly, and you and I probably politically are on such opposite spend, and the first comment to me when I was a young candidate was, "I think you're educable." So thank you for all your advocacy and for your patience and for your respect. Your comments about elected officials is well taken, and that's the way you govern yourself, and much appreciated. Thanks. You did the, I'll just move down. Rick, you had your turn, I think, didn't you? Unless you want to jump in here.
Oh, oh, yeah, I said my three, four minutes, but it's been a real honor. I mean, of all the people on this up here, I've known you the least amount of time, the shortest amount of time, but you made a big impression on me. And a lot of people who live in Leon County will never know exactly what the contribution you have made over the years, but we do. And we hope that today will help people know that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Out of all the up here on the dais, I'm pretty well sure I'm probably the only one that Pam Hall did not vote for initially. But you know what? The minute after I was elected, that story's true. She came to my office, she sat me down, and she committed to teaching me everything that she knew in order for me to be able to understand my job better from a land, land use and zoning perspective. I really appreciate that. I can honestly say that most, if not all, of what I know right now about the urban services area, urban sprawl, urban court, urban revitalization comes right from that woman, and I appreciate it. I don't just call her Pam Hall, I call her Dr. Hall. She was, in effect, my professor, that made me the commissioner I am in a lot of ways. I appreciate the time that we had to spend talking over, talking over that map, but also the philosophical conversation that we had had nothing to do with the map. She became a friend, she became a confidante, a mother at times, and gave me all kinds of advice. So that's something that goes far deeper past politics. Who knew that I would meet a Pam Hall in my life to give me the encouragement and to give me the advice that you've given me? And I really appreciate that. And I hope for many years to come, we can sit down over that map, and you can tell me, Nick Maddox, you better. And most times I'll listen, and those don't, and those times I won't, I'll look out in that crowd and get that out for me that I should have listened. But I appreciate you, and we appreciate all you've done for Leon County. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Jackson.
Yeah, much like Commissioner Miner, being the new person, City Commissioner Debbie Leitzey informed me that I needed to talk to Pam Hall. And then she reminded me on at least half a dozen occasions after that. But your passion and your ability to communicate is unparalleled. The only way I could have gotten into MIT would have been to pay an entry fee. But I do appreciate where you come from. Although we are on separate ends of Leon County, we believe in some of the same protections that occur in the very district that I serve. So I appreciate your wisdom and the ability you have to communicate in a effortless way, it seems like many times. And thank you, Debbie, for reminding me frequently that I needed to get with Dr. Hall.
I could say ditto to everything that has come before, proclamations, comments, everything There I have learned a tremendous amount, but I've also disagreed with nuances at times. And those conversations are as illuminating and as challenging as anything. Your role as a mother, Pam, is exceptional, and we've talked a lot about that. And your girls are really lucky. Scott, thank you for being such a strong support, and I know you've probably heard lots of rants and helped unwind those things. Looking at the group that surrounds you, though, all of you have played such an incredible role. And I think one of the biggest legacies, and it is true tonight for solar and the emails I got immediately after the last meeting, when you all, Tracy, were talking and coming to some understanding on an issue that walked in here thinking we were on different sides about. Coming from a time where we use lawsuits and other things, and not to say that may not be necessary from time to time, to the Keep It Rule model, where we found consensus, it wasn't easy. We took the time to dig into that. I think that is the legacy, the details, the impact on the policies, absolutely, but the legacy on how we approach these things, that our staff, and we know that we can work through these things, may not be perfect, but we get to a good place. I truly appreciate that. I appreciate the folks who are always here together and supporting, and I look forward to our next walk together. Thank you for all you do.
Commissioner Lindley.
Well, you know, I'm a literary person, which I had to confess to you one time when we were deep, 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 deep into your scientific and mathematical theories about something. And I had, it was an embarrassing moment for me, but thank you for being my best teacher in that, in all those areas. I really have learned so much from you. But, you know, I think the thing I appreciate about you most is that you make trust possible. You know, you know how to walk across a bridge and talk to people who aren't as informed, who aren't as ready to even see the consequences or see on down the road. And I just appreciate the good humor that you bring to the act of engaging with elected officials. I'm reading for relaxation James Patterson's book on The President Is Missing, and this is written with Bill Clinton. And there's a paragraph in it, when he's sitting before a Senate committee, and he's muttering to himself that the hardest thing he ever has to do is have a straight face when he listens to a bunch of people who know absolutely nothing about what they're talking about, and pretend that he's totally engaged and is willing to walk with them. And I hope to heavens that that hasn't happened like every time you've been here. But I'm sure there have been moments. So thank you for building the trust, because, you know, we hear from so many people, and a lot of it has to do with, can we really, can we really feel that what this person is saying is valid, is reasonable, that we can understand and learn from it? And if you don't trust somebody, you have nothing. And I think you all know that. And trust is not something that you just walk in expecting as respect. And so I thank you for that, because I know it's not been easy all the time for you to reach across and shake some sense into people. But thank you for everything. Really, really have loved this whole time with you, and I'm not going to be around here much more to hear your three minutes or anything else, but these folks are lucky, we are all lucky to have this time with you.
Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you. Pam, I attended MIT usually on the weekends, because my favorite, my favorite legal seafood is right there, you know, on campus. So coming across the bridge over into Cambridge, Legals was over there, and that's the only reason I went to MIT. I've discovered that sometimes people speak the same language. You say tomatoes, and I say tomatoes. You order oysters, and I order osters. Tomatoes, tomatoes, potatoes, potatoes. You've never called the whole thing off. And your willingness to hear and listen to the voices of commissioners and to hear sometimes the sociological accent with which sometimes my comments are spiked, you've always been patient, and I respect that. Now Pam has the kind of attitude, and you know, when you're real smart, you can be a little pompous and arrogant because you got it like that, and can come in a little demanding, like I'll beat you up and take your lunch, too, and dare you to cry. You know, she's got that kind of swag. But she has something unique for such a lofty mind, and that is a heart of compassion. And the reason that I've always been able to use the word trust, walk with you and hear your side, is that I didn't know some of the stuff you was talking about either. But I trusted your heart, because you always had compassion. And that's an amazing thing that a scientist brings, so I tried to listen and learn, too, trusting your heart. Your head was beyond my head. I always felt your heart, and that kept me in, you know. But I want you to know that there is a quote in today's Democrat at the top of the, top of the opinion page that says, what's his name, Andrew Jilari? But Martin Luther King quoted this guy, that the hottest places in hell are reserved for those who remain neutral during moments of great moral crisis. And I think that neither you nor I will be in the hottest places. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. MIT, that's pretty impressive.
No, I was just there for legal seafood.
Take a menu as a diploma?
Well, he actually crossed the bridge, and that can be pretty damn cold. You know, thank you so much for saying you trust me. I mean, that's probably the most important part of politics. And I'm glad that you think I've deserved that trust, and, you know, I'm true to data, and I can change my mind. And thank you so much about the comment about my compassionate heart. Thank you, guys.
And I think the administrator would like to weigh in as well.
Pam, this is just a quick timeout, right? It's going to be time in again soon, so I need to say this.
I know, I understand the three minutes.
I'm going to say this during timeout. Pam, just, I couldn't let this opportunity go by without thanking you on behalf of staff. You referenced staff a moment ago, and the dozens and dozens of staff.
But I trusted your heart because you always had compassion. And that's an amazing thing that a scientist brings. So I tried to listen and learn, too, trusting your heart. Your head was beyond my head. I always felt your heart, and that kept me in, you know. But I want you to know that there is a quote in today's Democrat at the top of the opinion page that says, what's his name, Andrew Jilari? But Martin Luther King quoted this guy, that the hottest places in hell are reserved for those who remain neutral during moments of great moral crisis. And I think that neither you nor I will be in the hottest places. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. MIT, that's pretty impressive.
No, I was just there for legal seafood.
Take a menu as a diploma?
Well, he actually crossed the bridge, and that can be pretty damn cold. You know, thank you so much for saying you trust me. I mean, that's probably the most important part of politics. And I'm glad that you think I've deserved that trust and, you know, I'm true to data and I can change my mind. And thank you so much about the comment about my compassion and heart. Thank you, guys.
And I think the administrator would like to weigh in as well.
Pam, this is just a quick timeout, right? It's going to be time in again soon, so I need to say this.
I know, I understand the treatment.
I'm going to say this during timeout. Pam, just, I couldn't let this opportunity go by without thanking you on behalf of staff. You referenced staff a moment ago and the dozens and dozens of staff. And frankly, whether we agreed or disagreed, or in other words, when we were wrong.
You just wrote me down.
You always made us better, and we really do appreciate it. And let me just say, Commissioners, that it's probably 25 years ago, Commissioner Proctor, it was a long time, early, early on in my career, I was in a, around a boardroom table in the back here with Dr. Hall on a development issue that I won't name. And she told me that, that as we were disputing some stormwater issues, she said, "My problem was that I was thinking like an engineer, and I should be thinking like a turtle. And I just want you to know that ever since then, I've been thinking like a turtle."
Thanks, guys.
All right, to our turtle administrator, Pam. We love you. We love you. Seriously. All right, now I think public hearings are on.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number 25 provides the second and final of two public hearings for the Board's adoption on an ordinance that will encourage use of solar energy systems. This is, since it's the last public hearing, staff, or since our last public hearing, staff has continued to meet with industry stakeholders as well as members of Keep It Rural and Tall Timbers. And we were able to come to what I believe are acceptable terms related to the land development issues included in this final ordinance. Commissioners, we have a few speaker cards on this item. And the first one, if it's your pleasure, Mr. Chairman, is Elva Peppers. Elva Peppers.
Good evening, Elva. Name and address for the record.
Good evening. Elva Peppers. I'm with Florida Environmental Land Services, 221-4 Delta Court, Tallahassee, 32303. And I'm representing Summit Energy Partners LLC tonight. So Summit Partners LLC has been engaged with staff and in this whole process. And I think you heard from my client, Mark, before. I'm going to read this so that way I can get through all the points in my limited amount of time. My discussion only applies to utility-scale projects located in non-residential areas. My client has two major concerns. First, were setbacks inclusive of the fence and perimeter road? Secondly, the type D buffer planting requirements adjacent to non-residential lane uses. County staff was able to clear up the first question and assured me that although the language was removed from the ordinance, the intent is to have the setback distance apply to the first vertical structure not including the fence. Therefore, the boundary fence and perimeter road can be within the 100-foot setback. The second and bigger concern is requirement to have a type D buffer surrounding the project for all lane uses. This buffer is the densest buffer that the county requires in this instance. The cost to install this buffer, which is 30 to 60 feet in width, would be very high and would require many gallons of water during the plant, the planting and tree establishment phase. To familiarize you with the typical project scope, the height of typical solar panels is five to 12 feet. Fields of this nature are normally greater than 50 acres. They are limited elsewhere in the proposed ordinance to be in industrial, light industrial, urban fringe, and rural zone districts. While I've not been deeply involved in all discussions during development of this ordinance, I presume that the main concerns associated with this use and the buffer are wildlife usage and the visual buffer. The buffer requirement addressed, well, let me skip that one. It can be argued that the development of a parcel as a solar farm in an industrial, light industrial setting will likely have little effect on wildlife use over and above other adjacent and more intrusive uses such as concrete plants, distribution facilities, or mining operations. That is why my client would like to propose the type A buffer be implemented adjacent to these uses. The 100-foot setback in type A plan of buffer will provide for those protections. Within agricultural zoning, industrial and light industrial uses are currently allowed to have less than a type D buffer, and therefore, they would like to propose the type A buffer within that area as well. My client, Summit Energy Partners, and I would like to thank you for your consideration of these comments, and I would be happy to discuss additional modifications with staff if you choose to not adopt this.
Thanks, Elva.
Thank you, Nick Speaker. Pamela Hall to be followed by Kim Ross.
Pamela Hall, 5051 Quail Valley Road. I'm pleased that the only thing we're arguing about is a buffer on properties that abut the solar plants that are not residential and are not roads. So this is all the lands for which no one currently lives on, the other farmlands and potentially national forests. There's sort of two ways to think about this. One is the cost of this buffer. And my suggestion here is that these are $80 million projects. The cost of the land in these buffers are very small relative to the value of these projects. And their value not only is profit, but they're also valuable because they're going to give us, you know, carbon-free energy, at least close to carbon-free energy. So I don't think the buffer is a particularly onerous task in terms of money. In terms of maintaining it, well, you know, plant it with wax myrtle and sweet gum, and you'll only have to water it for one year. It'll take off on its own. The other thing is to recognize that part of this plan allows for reducing the setback, which is part of the cost. If the buffer that exists there, the natural vegetation, is already quite substantial. The other thing I think you should think about, particularly for the urban fringe, is that even if the land next door is currently unoccupied, the urban fringe is what we consider our rural residential area. We're trying not to overdevelop the rural areas. We're trying to keep them as open space. And these solar farms do not count as open space. This is not wildlife habitat, and it's hundreds and hundreds of acres, and it doesn't even handle the stormwater the same way or do the aquifer recharge the same way. So there's substantial environmental impacts. It's a trade-off because these are solar farms, and we need solar energy. But it's not like these aren't huge environmental impacts. But in the urban fringe, we're trying to preserve the land that's not yet built on for future residential, rural-like development, because there's always going to be people in this town that want to live like that, and we're leaving space open for them. And if you start developing these very large industrial uses in the urban fringe and also in rural areas, it's really going to change the character. So these buffers are not just about what currently exists, it's also about the future use. And because they're such large industry and because they are so expensive to build for all the other reasons that we use them, I do not think it's too much to ask that Leon County residents and landowners get well protected from their use. Thank you. So I want you to adopt it exactly the way it's written.
Thank you, Dr. Hall.
The next speaker, Kim Ross, to be followed by Mike Riklich.
Good evening, Kim Ross, 1203 Beckingham Drive, officially as of tomorrow. We hope, knock on wood. So I'm right, Rethink Energy Florida. I'm a founder of Rethink Energy Florida. We founded it back in 2010, and I'll be very brief. Because when I founded Rethink Energy Florida, and actually even before that, when Pam and Scott and Colleen and I and many others founded Earth Steps, I said, I had the bug around climate change and energy. And I said, if I have to go back to school, I will. But if I don't, then I won't. And I didn't go back to school. And the reason I didn't go back to school was because I wanted to rely on experts. And so I am going to waste the rest of my time and tell you that I rely entirely on Pamela Hall, as you all just mentioned, as an expert in land use, and I endorse everything she just said. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Riklich to be followed by Neil Fleckenstein.
My name's Mike Riklich. I live at 9601-68 McCaskey Road, and I'm here with Keep It Rural. And I, too, want to echo what Pam said. I first wanted to say that the last time I came and spoke about this, I was drawing a line in the sand about how, you know, it couldn't be the way it was, and, you know, they could take their solar farms and go somewhere else. But my wife, Sarah, and I and Pam went and worked with staff, Barry Wilcox and Ryan Culpepper. Barry rode his bicycle all the way out to the co-op to meet with us. And then we came to town, and we worked with utility companies. We worked with the companies that want to build solar farms. And we came up with a great solution. We, you know, that line in the sand of mine was quickly left in the dust, and I became involved in the decision-making. And I think we came up with a really good plan that already talked about all these things. And some of the people that, in fact, I think Mark, Mark was on the phone with us in a conference call. And all these things were kind of cut and dried and decided, we're here to rubber stamp what we did the other day, but we do have some reservations about trying to lower the variances. But I just want to say, especially to you, Nick, I think you'll appreciate this, that, you know, after Joe Burrow got a Heisman Trophy, he thanked Coach O, and he told the LSU faculty that they should give them lifetime contracts. I think we ought to give Barry and Ryan lifetime contracts. We're here at Fisher.
Thank you, Neil Fleckenstein, to be followed by Tracy Bensley. That's your final speaker, Tracy Bensley. After Neil.
Neil Fleckenstein, Tall Timbers Research Station, 13093 Henry Beadle Drive. I am an FOP, that's a friend of Pam. We were involved with Keep It Rural and staff working on the ordinance, and I echo what Mike said. Barry and Ryan and all of the rest of the staff just did a fabulous job on this. I think we basically got to consensus on just about everything. I mean, key issues, you know, facility size and location, flexibility for requirements for the smaller facilities from our friends at Talquin Electric, and the vegetative buffer issue in terms of between utility-scale solar and then roadways and residences. I did notice the letter from Mr. Sager. And we do have a difference, personally, from Tall Timbers' perspective, we have a difference of opinion there. I think in the letter, he noted that there's no public purpose for having anything more than a type A buffer between a utility-scale solar facility and an adjacent, non-residential landowner. I would argue that there's a very compelling public purpose, and that is, we've got these proposed up to an 800-acre utility-scale solar facility amidst traditional rural land uses like agriculture, solviculture, forestry, hunting, and then folks who just own that land for the pure enjoyment of the solitude. So I think there is a very compelling purpose even between the utility-scale facility and a non-residential property in terms of maintaining a significant buffer, especially given the size of facilities that we're talking about. 800 acres is essentially eight to 10 times the size of Governor Square Mall. So that's a pretty significant footprint. And if I had my 100 acres in the rural landscape, I would at least want to have a robust vegetative buffer there. So we support the ordinance in its present form, and we'd encourage you to adopt it. Thank you very much.
Speaker, Tracy Bensley.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tracy Bensley, 3021 Eagle Point Way. And I am the general manager of Talquin Electric. A couple of things. First, I want to say thank you to the staff. I think the staff did an excellent job of getting everybody together quickly. And we had a good meeting on December 16th. You all know that was less than a week after the public meeting, which is very impressive to me that you could bring that many people together that fast. I think staff did an excellent job of working through that meeting, bringing everybody together, coming to compromise on everybody's issues. Thank you to the Keep It Rural and Tall Timbers folks also for listening. We appreciate that and working through our issues. I think the only other thing I would add is I believe when we left the meeting on December 16th, I think everybody had a good understanding of what was agreed to. And I believe the form of the ordinance that you're looking at right now represents what everybody understood. So I would encourage you to go ahead and approve it as of this.
That's all our speakers. This is shades of blueprint information here, everybody coming together. Commissioners, Commissioner Dozier.
I'm, Elva, I understand the concerns about the buffer, but I do have to say, this is, this is the comments that I was making in proclamation. We were on either side. I think the line in the sand you referenced, Mike, is the right way. And Tracy, you kind of had that as well. And this is exceptional. Appreciate your comments about Barry and Ryan. I'm not sure they want a lifetime appointment. We would welcome keeping them as long as they choose to stay, absolutely. So nice drive, guys. And Mr. County Administrator, this, I mean, just the whole process through this since last summer, really happy with it. So, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to make a motion. I think that's option one.
I'd second that.
Thank you. Thank you all for your efforts.
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Well done. That's the way it's supposed to work. Thank you all. Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item requests the Board to conduct the first and only public hearing to consider an ordinance increasing additional civil traffic penalty from $3 to $5, which will be used to fund Leon County schools, high school driver education programs.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just want to appreciate the support of the Board. It's an important time for us to train drivers. 85% of the kids that have been through this program since 2010 have gone on to receive their driver's license right there on campus. I think it's a vital part of teaching safe driving skills and look forward to raising a whole another generation with good equipment to do that.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 27 is essentially, Commissioners, a conforming ordinance to be consistent with new legislation in the area of communications facilities. We have no speakers. No speakers and are happy to answer any questions you might have.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. All right. End of the night. Let's start Commissioner Proctor. Oh, I'm sorry, are there any speakers? No, thank you. Appreciate it, Commissioner Dozier.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank this commission for its leadership. I want to thank the staff for the outstanding retreat that we had and the directions of our new library. I think that we're moving in a great, great direction. And I'm sure that in the coming weeks, as we begin to communicate what the, I don't use the word overhaul, but augmenting what we do and enriching the services which are delivered from the library, I'm very, very hopeful that it's going to be a big, big plus. I want to give a shout-out tonight. I think I've never done this before, but I think that Coach Leonard Hamilton is in the midst of a historic season.
He's playing in 10 minutes, I'd just like to point out.
Okay.
Coach Hamilton.
And because I need to.
No, I'm just making a point.
And not that I believe that he needs my assistance to help him coach tonight, but I know that we all want to get there, so I'm going to curtail my comments right there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proctor. Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What a great night. I am so incredibly moved by this last program for Dr. Hall. And it makes me feel so happy to be part of this community of, on our board and this community as a whole. So it's a great night.
Thank you.
I have one thing. The Florida Department of Elder Affairs is trying to, trying to get communities, counties, and cities to join the age-friendly network for Livable Florida. And this would involve, if we agree to join this, and I suspect we may need an agenda item to look into this a little bit more, but it really gets communities in there planning to be able to share different kinds of best practices and research and planning models and so forth on how to make all communities age-friendly, healthier, economically sustainable, and so forth, and to just draw that into the mix. I'm sure we're doing that to some extent in all.
And we were previously certified in that area, but we may have to re-up.
Okay, to see if this is a refresher for something they're setting in. So if I could have an agenda item to look into this a little bit more? Appreciate it. Make a motion for that.
We have a motion and a second for an agenda item, as Commissioner Lindley's outlined. Is it understandable? Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Yeah. Commissioner Proctor on point? I'm sorry.
No, not on the point, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. That's it?
Okay. Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Beth McGrove sent a reminder to me to remind Commissioners that the state Uh, Beth, um, McGrove, uh, uh, sent a reminder to me to remind Commissioners that the state bicentennial stakeholders meeting is tomorrow morning at the RE Gray Building, uh, with registration beginning at eight, and the meeting is from nine to 10.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, well, perhaps unfortunate timing, I was aware of the bicentennial meeting and wished we could attend, but we have our Floor Association of Counties Legislative Day tomorrow. Um, Mr. President of FAC, Commissioner Maddox, uh, good luck. I'm sure you have a lot of work tomorrow. I do want to take a moment though and say that, I think this is, I can't believe it, our 10th for Commissioner Maddox and I, our 10th Legislative Day with FAC, and I have never seen this level of engagement from the Governor, from Cabinet officials and department heads, and I really, I, I'm glad that they're leaning in. They will be there at our briefing tomorrow morning, um, and I just wanted to really appreciate the administration, the executive and the other Cabinet officials for doing that. Um, so that's why we will miss the bicentennial. Um, the other thing, I guess just a little point that has, I've been reflecting on the last 24 hours, we happened to be at Dodd-Hall yesterday. Fantastic retreat, great conversation, really excited about the way we're focused on the library or our renewed focus. Um, but I, having been in the Religion Department for many years and taught, I actually came into office, this is not something I've talked about much, and struggled a bit with how to approach the invocation. And, um, this comes up in rotation. It's not something that many people really think about. There's an invocation every time, but we rotate. And my kind of way I approached this was try to get as much of a diversity of people in, and I think you all do that as well. And I really appreciate a little extra time today in having, um, our two young women, uh, and Pastor Griffin come in. They're part of the Worship With Me program, like I said, which is very exceptional through the all-in. Um, and I just, I really hope that we can kind of keep that going. Again, I've never mentioned this before, but, um, I think it is a, a way we could highlight some really good works happening in our community and the faith community. Um, so I'm going to be looking for other opportunities and just wanted to mention that. The two issues that I have, Mr. Chair, I'll try to go quick because you've got a basketball game to watch.
I'm here all night. Take your time.
Okay, well then I'll take a little more time. Um, so, um, thank you, Commissioner Maddox, for giving up the seat on COCA. This has been quite a five months, um, for the Board. Um, I see Carrie Postier from TDC. I'm not sure if Kathleen with COCA is still here. She was here earlier. Okay. So Kathleen, our new Executive Director at COCA, walked in, took on a huge challenge with Facilities Grant, and I want to compliment, uh, LaShawn Riggins from County Attorney's Office, um, Council hired by COCA, TDC Board, Carrie, everyone, really having to unwind a challenging issue with the grant. COCA Board met yesterday, we got in the right posture. I just saw an email conveying that over to the TDC. So, Mr. County Administrator, the reason why I'm bringing this up tonight is, um, the, uh, original schedule had this grant coming to our Board after being approved by TDC in January. And some of the projects, um, if they are approved at a special meeting of TDC, are time-sensitive. So I, I know the schedule is tight, but anything we can do to get this on the February 12th, I talked to some of those nonprofits last night, um, I think that would be really beneficial to keep this moving. Is that possible?
Please.
I understand the special meeting's not scheduled and conversation with Carrie, if it is scheduled and if they approve, I know it might not be in your window for agenda items, which is the very reason why I'm bringing this up.
And the window, uh, won't come into play, we'll expedite it.
Thank you very much. That's, that's why I've, I wanted to do this, because it's, it's happening in rapid succession. So thank you very much. The last thing, Mr. Chair, um, yesterday Commissioner Proctor referenced something about lobbying and I, I said I wanted to make a comment tonight. Um, Mr. County Administrator, to my, I, I believe I'm right in saying that we extended both federal and state lobbying contracts for one year, um, as of October, and so this would be the year that we, we would have another choice to extend the contract or do an RFP. Is that right?
It used to be on different years, uh, terms. Did we, did we reconcile those years? One was in October, one was a calendar.
I believe both were.
I think we may have reconciled those terms since. But Andy Winter, there's, uh, coming back just to confirm.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. You did extend for the first of two-year terms. Uh, we intend to bring it back to you again for the final, uh, one-year extension for your consideration when we bring the end-of-session report.
Okay, so you, so you're going to recommend, Andy, to, to do one more year on this?
Uh, we got to recommend or, or direction, but we, we would bring it back for your consideration at that time.
The reason why I wanted to ask this question, um, thank you, Andy, for our federal contracts, our federal lobbying contracts, our lobbyists works with Congress for sure, they're always technically in session, I suppose, um, but also with different departments. And thinking about our work at CRTPA, increased collaboration with, um, Department of Transportation, which remarkably, you, you mentioned this yesterday and it had been on my mind from a slightly different angle, but also with, uh, Department of Economic Opportunity and others, we are increasing our engagement with the state. And I would really love for us to look at our state lobbying contract in the same way we look at federal. A firm that could help us during session, but also work with our, um, executive depart, you know, the departments in the state throughout the year, if we have a question about a grant or to identify other opportunities. Um, the example being when we add a road to our legislative priorities that might be in the CRTPA five-year list, we might actually be doing ourselves a disservice with that and we didn't know it for a while. So, um, Mr. County Administrator, is there, even with the contract extension, there may be an opportunity to reflect on this? I don't know, but I, the reason why I asked about the RFP was that I thought this would need to be included in a new contract, because it's not in our existing. Would that be right?
I think we have the flexibility within our existing contracts to, to again provide. At least, we work with our, with, with our folks year-round through the agency grant process and that sort of thing. So it sounds like, based on what I was hearing, that we have ample flexibility. Doesn't preclude, though, the Board may, again, decide you want to change vendors, in which case we'll be bringing that item to you. But I think currently we have the flexibility within our existing contract.
I'm, I'm very happy with our current vendor. We've had, um, capital lines for a long time. It is not my understanding that every firm does the same, has the same approach. Um, but if you need a motion, I can make it. I'd love to hear, uh, some information about that, um, in the agenda item when you bring it back. Uh, do you need a motion for that?
We'll be happy to include that.
Okay. Mr. Chair, is that acceptable?
It's fine.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Great. Thanks, Commissioner Dozier.
Mr. Chairman, can I weigh in on that point, please? Is that, I know it's not a motion on the floor, but I, um, appreciate Mr. Dozier bringing that. And, um, I think that, um, the group that was here earlier, um, some of them had worked on, in the Woodville area for sewer project. And, um, I was very inspired by a, um, particular whispered comment that Commissioner Lightsey, um, um, offered in my ear. And I think that, uh, what we've done through the agency of, uh, what we've procured through, uh, underscores what Commissioner Dozier is saying. There, there may be some low-lying, uh, fruit that because of our proximity to state agencies that we, uh, have not channeled or looked at or, but anyway, the, um, the grant that we are now working with, uh, places us, uh, we're using to our advantage our proximity to state government. And I think that that's absolutely, um, and I think that also, as we have reflected on lobbyists before, they pretty much have told us what they do. This gives us a chance to tell them what we want them to do. And I think it's important for us to direct them as opposed to just saying, hey, we're going to throw it up and see what, what falls down. And, um, the specialty area of transportation is its own, um, specialized, unique, different, the difference between a brain surgeon and I guess a good doctor, I don't know, it's different. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Commissioner Jackson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, it just, uh, always, uh, is good, uh, to come in here, different points of view. But when you look at the list of items and the things that we talk about and, and the way that we are so forward-thinking, it's easy to get caught up in the moment, but if it's anything from litter on our roadways to recycling for the future, it seems that this Board always is looking a, a generation ahead. And I think that that's important because, well, I won't speak for everyone, but some of us have already had their heyday and, uh, we want to leave a better place for our children and grandchildren and generations after us. And most of those decisions that are made, um, up here, um, consider that really important and it, it inspires me, so I appreciate it so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Maddox.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I enjoyed the retreat yesterday, enjoyed the Board meeting today. Good job, Mr. Chair. Uh, wanted to highlight a, uh, instance, uh, something that happened not too long ago. If you go by now and look at the intersection of, uh, Fred Lee, I believe, and Orange? Orange and Jim Lee, there's a blinking light now.
Wow.
That has been asked for forever. Um, our own Darryl Jones sat down with, uh, in his school board member capacity after receiving, uh, some, some, uh, information from his principal cook over at, at, uh, Godby, uh, Godby, I'm sorry, Rickards. Uh, and sitting down with County Administrator and, and they came up with some plans to get that, that light in and now our kids can cross that street without worrying. So I wanted to shout out staff for getting on that real quick and shout out, uh, School Board Member Jones and the, uh, Principal over at Rickards for bringing it to our attention. Um, my wife's birthday just passed on the 15th. Y'all, so tell her happy birthday. She had a good one, uh, January 15th. She's born on Martin Luther King Day. Yep, yep, yep. So she had a good one. She's all smiles. So, uh, it is good to be back. I miss you guys. Uh, we came back hard and heavy though with these two meetings, so I look forward to the rest of the year with you guys. Thank you.
Chairman, what time are your activities tomorrow?
Oh, yes, 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 yes. So as Commissioner Dozier did, did say, we're starting tomorrow, tomorrow morning with FAC at 7:30 and we'll be going until about, uh, 7:30 at night. From 7:30 to 8:30, be breakfast and registration. Eight o'clock, we'll start our legislative briefing and we have everybody there, uh, the Governor, uh, Commissioner of Agriculture, Chief Resilience Officer, Secretary DOT, Director FDM, and also Secretary of DEP. So it's a big lineup and it's going to be there from 8 to 11:30. Then from 11:30 to 5:30, you can meet with your legislators and, and lunch on your own and then we'll come back for reception at 6:00. Uh, for those of you that can make it, please come out. It's going to be a great event. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we talked about this at the, the other day, but, um, this year is the 100th anniversary, the centennial of the League Women Voters forming. And, um, I'd like to request a, a proclamation for the League Women Voters of Tallahassee. Um, my, just, uh, in full disclosure, my wife is, um, the Treasurer of the National Board of the League, so there's not a financial conflict of interest there, but I wanted to disclose that. So I'd just like to make a motion for a proclamation, um, at the February 11th meeting. Their actual 100th anniversary is on February 14th, so they'll have just enough time to have that in effect.
Second.
Oh, you made the motion, didn't you?
You made the motion.
I'll second it.
Yeah, I made the motion, yeah.
All right. I second that too. Any, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Motion.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, I know you all read in the paper, the, the coverage from the Tallahassee Democrat about, uh, lobbying in the city and county, um, governments. So one thing I wanted to, to, to have as a future agenda item coming up sometime soon is basically, uh, what types of things we could do to clarify the definition of lobbying? Um, if, if you read my statement in the paper and some of the others from, from some of the folks in, in those articles, it was like, um, there wasn't a clear definition or understanding of what lobbying meant. You know, can, can someone that's paid by a client come and speak to a, in, in our case, a county commissioner and just provide information without any type of ask or without any type of vote coming up in the county commission? Is that lobbying or not? Um, so what I'd like to do is request, uh, the, the county attorney to develop something, just a, maybe a clarification, proposed clarification in our ordinance so that there's less, um, misunderstanding about what lobbying is. Um, and also to add to that, any additional options you might think that might help us, um, in our end goal of improving transparency for citizens with regard to lobbying. So that's, that's my motion.
I'll second that, yeah. Good motion.
Yeah, I did, I did. Yeah.
Any discussion? I think it's a fair motion, yeah. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition?
Thank you very much. Uh, last week, I met with Ms. Jerry Say, uh, C, Robert Drack and, uh, Ms. Sawyer to discuss what you all may have, may know about, but it's, uh, the Lake Hall School. It was a, a school built, uh, in the 1800s, um, by the African-American community in that area, and it was used until the 1930s as a single-room schoolhouse. Uh, it's still there, um, and, uh, my understanding is that the county has actually looked at that structure before the past to determine what we could do to preserve it. Um, but I don't believe there's ever been an agenda item on it. So I'd like to request, uh, the Board to consider, uh, having that come up as an agenda item, uh, in, in a nearby Board meeting. It looks like a lot of the work has been done by county staff, uh, already, so I don't think it'd take a lot of effort to produce that agenda item. With, with the idea of proposing options for preservation, an assessment of its current status, uh, what type of viable options might we have to preserve that, that school building?
It's a motion. I would second it. Okay. Any discussion? Where is it exactly?
It's right be, it's right between Lake Hall and, uh, Thomasville Road, on the, on the west side of Thomasville Road. It's close to my district line, but it's actually in your district. So, um, um, okay.
All right. Good. Motion on the floor, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay, I'm sorry, Rick.
And then lastly, just wanted to, um, my, I, from my understanding, Chastity Osteen, our, our incoming county attorney, spent quite a bit of time, uh, working with the county attorney's office, just kind of getting the lay of the land and, um, getting a, a good understanding of, of what, uh, kind of work the county office does, so county attorney's office does. So just wanted to recognize that, Ms. Osteen, and thank you for, uh, for your work and we're looking, uh, forward to having you join us.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Um, Counselor.
I have nothing.
Uh, Administrator, Administrator. I got, real briefly, a great retreat. Thank you, guys. I thought it was a lot of good discussion. Many thanks to staff. I know the amount of work that goes into putting that together, it's not small. Uh, Commissioner Lindley, I would echo your comments about Pam. It's the kind of thing that makes this job, you know, worthwhile. That was very well done, so whoever's idea that was, hats off to you. And I've got a couple of quick things. Um, the AmVets came to see me. There is a bell tower being built out at the National VA Cemetery and they have, they're raising a hundred thousand dollars. They are most of the way there. They've asked the city for $7,500 and they've asked us for $7,500. If we were the first door, money in the door, I would say, no, come back and see us. We're really the last. So I'd like to have an agenda item to consider this, if that's okay. So if somebody would, I can't make the motion.
I'll, I'll move, move.
All right. Any discussion? And it's a bell tower on the, and it turns it into more of a, I mean, the cemetery's And it's a bell tower on, and it turns it into more of a, I mean, the cemetery's turned into a bit of an economic driver, surprisingly, and people go out and visit it. So the bell tower will be something, people, when they go out there, to, anyway, we'll get all the information. I'll get it to you. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? And then lastly, there are two homeowners associations in Klarn, which was news to me as a person who has had this district for 14 years. There's one in the front, which is, we're all familiar with, which has been very active with Canopy. There's a smaller, less organized one in the back, Klarn Acres. And so I was in contact with them in the last year. They just found out after the last storm that they have, the city has been paying their light bill for the last 40 years, and they've been handed, basically, you're going to have to start paying your street lights. So their first ask was, could we pay their light bill? I said, that's just not going to work. That doesn't, but in the process, they're a very, let's call it economically constrained homeowners association. They said, we're keeping up two parks that are passive parks, one on Manawar and one on Whirlaway, Pimlico. And so I would ask for an agenda item to be brought back to say, is there a way for us? And I've had some loose conversations with staff, and I think it's doable for us to take them over. They're not active parks. It would just be a matter of cutting and trimming kind of thing. But I went out and looked at the one, and it's what you don't want a park to look like. You know, the trash was overflowing. It looked like it hadn't been cut in a while. It's in the heart of both these neighborhoods, so there's a ton of density. It would just effectively turn a neighborhood park into a public park.
Mr. Chairman, are those located in incorporated area?
Can we make them budget discussion items? Yeah, because there will be, yeah. Yeah. It's in, go ahead.
I was asking where they're in the incorporated area.
It is in the unincorporated area, if I had to guess right. Yeah, yeah. It's outside, it's off Shenan Lakes and the back part of Klarn Acres back there. Yes, Commissioner Dozier?
Good issue to bring up. It sounds like you're getting creative, trying to help. I would really love to understand the streetlight issue, the road issue, and everything else when this agenda item comes back, because it's been my understanding, even in the USA urban service area, which, you know, might be outside of the city limits, if the city's maintaining a road, there's, I mean, lights go with that. This seems quite unusual, so we don't need to unpack it right now necessarily, but if that can be part of the item, I'd really love to understand it more.
Yeah, and I will probably, I'd love to see that, too, because I have a passing understanding, and it'd be helpful for me to be able to communicate out en masse on my own to the homeowners, because there's some ways to adopt lights by the street or by the person that they can do, which we can communicate, so.
And this may be, I mean, this is someone else's house and a utility that probably most of us pay into, and our monthly bills, not all of us. It is troubling to me that a neighborhood would get hit with a surprise bill or some, I mean, not retroactive, but something that they weren't prepared or planned to do, and some of these issues just, you know, kind of dangle out there, so it's a good time to...
My understanding was it came up after the last storm, when they were respringing a lot of the lights and the power, and they said, well, wait a minute, and it just turned out the city had been paying it for the last 30 or 40 years. So they approached them and said, we can't do that anymore.